Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance and for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We will now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Dr. Gilbert, communications.
Thank you. Yes, you have several communications, but first I'd like to tell you that the tray that you have in front of you is from the Nutrition Department in honor of National School Breakfast Week, which occurred this month, so there's your tray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips is holding it up over there.
I think it's an important lesson, too. It's just something important to remember. You cannot teach a hungry child.
That would be absolutely correct. Thank you. We have the announcement of the School and System Teachers of the Year that you have there. This is sponsored by the Council of Chief State Officers, and so I'm going to read those because I think those teachers certainly deserve recognition. We will be having a celebration for them on Tuesday, March 18th, from 4:30 until 6:00 at the Oakland's Mansion. But the Teachers of the Year, and these are voted on by their colleagues in their building, which is a tremendous honor. From Bradley, Allison Isom and Ginger Hazelbaker; from Discovery, Angela Booneye, Suzanne St. John; from Scales, Cherry Ross and Cynthia Martin; from Hobgood, Rebecca Sublett and Erin Phillips; from Northfield, Stacy Young and Diane Lewis; from Pittard, Leah Fallis and Diane Byrd; from Bellwood, Amy Adcock; from Black Fox, Kristy Robinson and Zenobia Craig; from Kason Lane, Carrie Victory and Carolene Goff; from Mitchell Nelson, Dolores Brown and Gail Porterfield; and from Segal, Meg Reed and Margaret Lane. And the teachers who are our district Teachers' Year that will move on to state level are Angela Booneye and Suzanne St. John. So congratulations to all of those teachers. They are closest to the children and the most important people in this school district other than our children. Read Across America, you will be hearing about, if you haven't already received invitations, I'm sure you will receive some invitations, but Dr. Seuss's birthday is March the 2nd, which is a Sunday, and so our schools are having celebrations that week in which the community is invited in to read to children. We will be having a mass choir on Thursday, March 6th, at 7 o'clock at Irma Segal. This is an amazing event that really was begun last year. This is initiated by our music teachers and the data set by our music teachers. This will be a day where really the talents of our children are on display. Our Read to Succeed Family Fun Night will be Thursday, March 27th, at Kason Lane, and we are expecting a large turnout there, so you certainly are welcome to that, and so is the public. The City Hall Art Show will take place April 10th. This is something that our schools have participated in for years, and so we're very excited about that and showing the talents of our students there. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank David and Stacy Owen for their $400 donation. Target in partnership with First Book has selected Hobgood to receive a $500 award for the Books for School Program, and the librarian there said she felt like it was Christmas at her school when she got that. Making Music, which has been a great project headed up, really spearheaded by Gloria Christie and her family, her entire family has been involved, but this is really an offshoot of Uncle Dave and Bacon Days, and they have been having assemblies at Bradley. It's been amazing because what they have done is they've tracked the history of this region through music, and so that last event will be this Thursday at 1:00 and at 2:00. And the theme will be the crossover years, the 1960s, and I believe the kindergarten is going to perform for that first session. This is not the end of Making Music. We are looking at having a Making Music camp that will be in partnership with Uncle Dave and Bacon Days, so our children can attend that event, and so this is something that Gloria is very interested in expanding, and we certainly appreciate that. And then you have a bullet that's entitled acknowledgements. We have some teachers who have really gone above and beyond and some recognition that has come to our district. For example, we have the librarian at Irma Segal that has partnered with Adams Place, and they have book buddies that come, and I've received an email from her, and it was a forward of an email from Adams Place about how much their seniors enjoyed participating in partnership with Irma Segal. We have had Fincher's County and Trousdale County schools who have visited us in the last few weeks. We will be hosting Etowah City on March 10th. These districts are coming to look at what we're doing with response to intervention, and they're one of several school districts now that have come to see what we're doing. We have two Murfreesboro City Librarians, Shannon Minner and Amanda Counts, who were featured in the February newsletter of the Tennessee Association of School Librarians. There was an excellent article there about those two schools. And then I received an email last night from Kim Franks. She said that yesterday Kendall Hampton and Nikki Saletti, Julie Dibble and Jennifer Burks, and Shannon Freeman presented at the Tennessee School Counselor and Leadership Institute in Chattanooga. The title of the session was "School Counselor PLCs," and I know last night Ms. Newell and I were emailing pretty late with Dr. Bob Baker. He was very excited at the idea of counselors forming professional learning communities. And then Robin responded back, "Well, that's not all. Our social workers also form professional learning communities," so he was excited about that. And then finally, Saturday, Murfreesboro City will be featured at the Fox Reading Conference. This will be at MTSU in partnership with the Dyslexia Center. Tammy Garrett, Sarah Wiley, Rebecca Sublett, Doris Coffey, and Carissa Brooks will be presenting successful implementation of RTI in Murfreesboro City Schools. And then finally, and I'm not excited about this one necessarily, but I think it's the right thing for her to do, Ms. Ridley will be retiring. She and I have lived together for a few years. We actually lived together before that. Linda Ridley started out as the secretary at Bradley Academy under the leadership of Zane Cantrell. This was in 1986 when Dr. John Hodgson was superintendent. She moved on to Black Fox with Zane in 1990, and that's where I first met her, was when she was there and got to know her and what a wonderful person she is. She then moved to central office. Those of us at Black Fox cried when that happened, but she moved to central office as the administrative assistant for Dr. John Hodgson. He was subsequently followed by Ms. Marilyn Mathis, and then I've had the privilege of working with her for the last four years. You all have worked closely with her because I know that she takes your phone calls and answers your questions that you have. She's always here at the board meeting. She's always supportive. She's kind. She's generous. She's going to be a grandmother, which is the only reason that I think that we would let her go. She's passionate about what she does. She's passionate about this school system. She's passionate about children, and she's a very good friend, and so I'd like for you to join me in thanking Linda Ridley for what she has done.
Well, as they say, the floor is open now for any board members. If you'd like to say anything to Mrs. Ridley, feel free just to go right ahead.
I don't know if I can say it without tearing up, but to me, Linda Ridley is the consummate professional and the true gentlewoman, and I'm just going to miss you so much, and thank you so much for all you've given.
Somebody else first.
She is one classy lady, and to handle all those personalities with the class that you have over the years is pretty amazing, and your grandchildren are very, very lucky to have you.
Dr. Brown.
Linda and I go all the way back to central high school days, so I will echo the statements of everyone else and just thank you for what you've done for Murfreesboro City Schools over the years.
While I'm on this side, Ms. Barrett or Mr. Campbell?
Thank you for answering our emails and phone calls. You always have the right answer, and I appreciate that.
Well, we do appreciate the work you've done, and I've gotten to know you a lot more since I've been on the board, and you always are very pleasant. When you call and you answer the phone, you can almost see the smile and the glow and the excitement that you have in helping out the director of schools and all of us for that matter. You certainly have been an asset to this school system and certainly will be missed, and I hope that you'll come back and visit oftentimes.
Mrs. Renier.
Mrs. Ridley and I worked together many years on the school calendars, and this is one, everything that everybody said, I echo. Linda knows her stuff. She's kept us all in line, not only the seven of us, administration, teachers, principals, everybody. I don't, no disrespect to your replacement, but I don't know what we're going to do when you leave because we may just come crumbling down. It's going to be really hard, and we love you dearly, and I'm so excited you're going to be with that grandbaby, but we sure will hate to lose you.
And your home phone number is what?
[laughter]
In fact, I want to say that it's been a pleasure, pretty much, all these years of it, it's been a safe progress. You know, I wish it all run up in the system, this whole thing, and so it's just been, it's just been, and I'm very proud, this city, I'm very proud of this district, this school is, and I'm going to miss you.
We'll miss you. Mr. Washington.
Well, Butch took the words out of my mouth when you said, when she answers the phone, you can almost feel the smile through the phone, and he's correct about that. She's very efficient and one of the nicest ladies I've ever met in my public service career, so I appreciate you.
I will say mine to you. When they say remarks at the end, I will end with what I have to say to you. Mrs. Phillips, you had a question about one of the communications?
Oh, I did. Just out of curiosity, how do they select the District Teachers of the Year?
The District Teachers of the Year are selected by a committee typically that consists of central office staff. It may consist, I believe it consists of principals, too, so that's typically how it's done. There is, the Teachers of the Year, the School Teachers of the Year have some forms to fill out, and these are all state-generated, the entire. And then when you get to the System Teacher of the Year, then they have an additional that they're going to fill out before they go to state, and that's when they get their letters of recommendations, which they have already done now, and so they're ready to be submitted to the state. And then there's typically, at the state level, and I've had the privilege of, had the privilege of serving on that committee, but typically you'll have former State Teachers of the Year that will come together and look at the different regions and select the teachers.
Mrs. Smith.
That is an amazing slate of teachers from each school. They, I've had the pleasure of being in several of the teachers' classrooms, and I understand why they've been recognized. They deserve it. There are many, many teachers that deserve it, but I appreciate that we give this opportunity to some of our finest.
If there are no more comments, we'll go down and ask for a motion for the approval of our consent items if there are no questions. Mrs. Renier.
I just have a comment on the approval of school fees, and I was glad to see this month, because I was going to make a comment last month, not thinking in my feeble little brain that we were just going to approve them, but I appreciate the fact that I think the teachers were a little more cautious this month as far as the amounts of money charged for the field trips. We know field trips are a vital part of the student's education. I remember when I was teaching kindergarten and we took our children to see a play in Nashville, Children's Theater, I believe, and one of my little boys said, "Where do you get the popcorn and the Coke?" And, you know, they don't have these experiences if we don't share them with the children. But when we see, when I see field trips that cost a parent $25 in this economy, it makes me worry a little bit, so I'm glad to see these fees have gone down a little bit. So thank you, teachers.
If there are no more comments, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye. Action items, Ms. Baker.
Okay, you have before you tonight some board policies that are before you for first reading. The first set of policies stems from an initial request from a board member that I draft a policy relative to the chair with the input from the director, appointing board members to various committees. While researching that request and seeing what other school districts did, I noticed that a lot of school districts had a policy that set forth the duties of the executive committee, and as we've discussed, the executive committee by state law consists of the chair and the director of schools. So initially, I presented you with a policy, BO49, that sets forth through items 1 through 8, the statutory duties of the executive committee that are set forth in state law, and then I added item 9, which would encompass the request of the board member relative to the executive committee being the chair and the director being responsible for appointment of board members to various committees as the need arises, and then reporting that appointment to the board. During our policy session earlier this month, a board member had brought up the point that they felt the chair should have that exclusive responsibility of appointing board members to committees as the need arises, and therefore I have two versions for you. I have version 1, which would encompass the executive committee, both the chair and the director, having input on appointment of board members to committees, or version 2, which consists of two policies, BO49, appointment of board members to committees, which makes that exclusively the responsibility of the chair to make those appointments, and BO50, entitled Executive Committee, which sets forth the duties, the statutory duties of the executive committee. And also in response to discussion that we had earlier and calls from board members, I added to the executive committee policies, lines 25 through 29, which indicate that the executive committee has the authority to delegate to school personnel the exercise of any of their powers and to discharge any of their duties that are required under this policy. So those are the changes I made since our policy session based on your discussion and input I received from board members following the meeting.
Board members, are there any questions or discussion for Mrs. Baker on these? Mr. Campbell.
So what we need to decide then, Ms. Baker, is either version 1 or version 2?
Yes, you need to. I think your first step is to decide, do you want the chair with the input of the board responsible for appointment of board members to committees, or do you want the chair to have the exclusive responsibility for that appointment of board members to committees? And then once you make that decision, it will determine which set of policies you choose.
All right, so then what we will do, could, if we look at the part, the document that you gave us in our last meeting, our work session, where it says it's the duty of the chair of the board to appoint committees authorized by the board?
The document, BO49, Appointment of Board Members to Committees?
No, I'm looking at 49-2, 205. It's page 4 of the original document that you gave us last time.
Of the statute?
Where it says the duty of the chair of the local Board of Education, too, and it gives four things, and one of those is number 2 says appoint committees authorized by the board.
Yes, that responsibility says that the chair can establish committees that the board can appoint members to committees developed by the board. I think this request encompassed not just committees set up by the board, it also is envisioning committees established by the director, any committees set up by the school system as a whole, not just those that are exclusively mandated and developed by the board.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Campbell?
Give me an example of where the director would set up a committee without the board knowledge of it.
For example, I believe.
I can give you an example. When principals come together, for example, we have a committee right now that is looking at, well, we will have, that's looking at truancy. We've had committees of principals who have looked at, well, any procedural things that the principals want, that we're trying to decide as a group. Gee, I can't think. Gary, can you think of? The truancy is the one that's the most recent that I can think of.
I guess I'm confused, which not always unusual. The document that we're looking at tonight and the executive committee, those would be committees that would be established by the Board of Education, not the committees that would be decided by the director or a group of principals, that sort of thing. Is that two different entities, so to speak?
It was my impression that the board was concerned about any committee that a board member would serve on, whether it be a committee developed exclusively by the board or it is a committee developed by the director.
That would have board members on.
That would have a board member.
That would have a board member. So the committee is set up by principals or assistant principals or the guidance, that would not come under this category.
Only if they had a board member on.
Only if they had a board member on.
Right.
Mrs. Phillips.
My question, Ms. Baker, is, the way I hear you explaining these two options, is the first option where it's listed as part of the duty of the executive committee for the chair and the director of schools, then that is, and then there's the other option is where it's solely the responsibility of the director of schools. I mean, I'm sorry, of the board chair. I misspoke myself. Okay. Can the one that has, that is the responsibility of the board chair include language that would accept input from, or solicit input from the director of schools? So it doesn't have to be, you know, cut off, you know, this, the, I mean, the chair does it, but she has, you know, the director has no input. I mean, can it, can there be a?
If that's the will of the board, yes. If the board desires that language in there, that could be added.
My, if you all remember, at the study session, I had, I brought forth a few concerns about this, about this, in that I do believe that it is important to have a degree of separation between the board as the employer and the director of schools as the employee for several reasons. One is, I don't want committee appointments to become political. You know, I want them, I don't want it to be that, for example, if you didn't get the committee that you most wanted, that somehow this will reflect back on the director of schools in evaluation, a negative evaluation, or that you would, or that a board member, not that any of us would, but, you know, that you would taint your votes on things or anything to solicit the goodwill and committee selection, committee appointments by the director of schools. That's why I think it's very important to have a, you know, to have that degree of separation, and, but I do also believe it's very important to seek, solicit input on these committees from the director because she's going to have perspectives that are unique to her position, and those are valid and important perspectives. But I think the ultimate authority for the selection of board members to committees ought to rest with the board chair, in our case, Ms. Wade. But, you know, I'm flexible. I'll, of course, concede to the will of the board, but those are just my thoughts on it.
Mrs. Smith.
I actually think that was very well put. What I think would be nice would be to say with input from the director of schools with the final determination by the board chair, something like that.
Could we, instead of just saying, input from the director of schools, could we or do we need to make that any broader and say with input from, I don't know, I don't guess we want it where everybody in the world could, but they're going to anyway if they want suggestions on the committee.
You mean maybe input from the rest of the board?
Yeah, the rest of the board, or maybe even supervisors, you know? I don't know. We may be making it too broad, and I don't want us to do that. That may be opening up more than what we need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Phillips and then Ms. Renier.
You know, ideally, I'd like to have at the retreat a broad discussion about the whole topic of committees because Mr. Campbell made a comment at our last study session that I thought had some merit, real merit to it, and he says, you know, I think, you know, maybe we ought to talk about this and, you know, think about changing committees from time to time for everybody to get more of a broader experience. And so, you know, I would really like to discuss that at retreat, but as far as the authority as to who assigns, I really think that the ultimate authority ought to rest with the board chair with input from our director of schools, and so I'm good with changing that language if anybody wanted to make a motion.
We still have a comment, and then we'll ask for a motion.
Well, my comment would be, our beloved chair of the board is going to leave us, so we're going to cry again, but, sorry, I cry easily. And so we don't know who the next person will be. We don't know who will be sitting in that seat, but I feel that some of us know each other better than we know some of the other members of the board. I think that the director probably knows our strengths and weaknesses more so than maybe I do, and may, so for that reason, I just think it's really important to have her input, and I'm not, I'm not saying I wouldn't vote one way or the other, but I just think that that input is just going to be very important, whether or not the board chair assigns the position or the director assigns the position. I think it needs to be a two-way street.
Okay, is that it?
Are there any more comments or questions?
I have one.
Mrs. Phillips?
Mine is just, I'm interested in the consensus of the board. Would you like to hear a motion about adding the language to, with input from our director of schools and to?
And which one?
Version 2 BO49?
Right.
Okay.
To BO49.
To the original BO49?
Well, I don't, I don't.
Version 2 that you have before you.
Version 2.
This little short version.
It's two sentences, three lines.
Would you all be interested in a motion like that if I make one?
Okay, let me.
I was going to make that motion, but if you want.
You go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion that we go with 49 and 50, and 49 we add solicit input from the director of schools with the final decision being with the board chair.
This version, the short?
Yeah, the little short one is 49, the long one's 50.
Okay.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Mrs. Baker, do you have the information that you need?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and this is our first reading, so we will entertain a motion on this one. Ms. Baker, would you read that, so we'll know what the motion is and we'll ask for the vote.
He indicated that he utilized version 2 BO49 and BO50 and revised BO49 to include that the chair shall solicit input from the director of schools with the final decision being that of the chair.
That is our motion, board, and there has been a second. Ms. Ridley, since this is our last, this is your last night, would you please call the roll?
Wait, I have one question.
Yes, question.
I'm sorry. I saw it on the computer, but I don't hear the line about.
I saw it on the computer, but I don't see here the line about the positions be communicated, that when the board chair appoints someone with the cooperation of the.
On version two, no, flip one more. Version two, BO-49, the three-line one, the second sentence says, "The chair shall promptly report any such appointment to the board at the next scheduled board meeting."
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Ridley?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am?
Aye.
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 Yes, thank you, Ms. Ridley. Ms. Baker?
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is board policy PER-10, payroll deductions. This policy, the addition that's been made to this policy is, reflects state law regarding if an employee has had their wages garnished for either child support or other purposes. There's a state law that states that employers cannot discipline or take, discharge an employee if their wages are being garnished for child support in alimony, and there's a federal law that states that, under the, that states that employers cannot discipline or take, discharge an employee whose wages are being garnished. And I included that language in this policy regarding payroll deductions, so that all supervisors clearly understand what the law says.
Are there any questions concerning this policy, PER-10? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for first, motion for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
I have a question.
Mrs. Phillips?
Did we, Ms. Baker, when we were voting on the second version of BO-49, were we also voting on this version of BO-50?
BO-50, yes. Yes, that was in the motion. Okay, the next board policy you have before you tonight on first reading is board policy STU-63 regarding head injuries. This policy stems from the, a new state law that they had enacted relative to injuries during athletic events for students, and it defines school youth athletic activities to mean those that are organized by school systems. It could range from athletic games to athletic clubs, any event where they are organized in such a way that there's competition against another team, club, or entity. So those would be our inter-system basketball league, our inter-system cheerleading, those type of events. And under this law, it requires that the Murfreesboro City School Board, working with guidance from the Tennessee Department of Health, and this, this whole state law is really driven by the Tennessee Department of Health's development of training, forms that the school systems are to hand out to parents and coaches and officials, that with the guidance of the Tennessee Department of Health, we are to adopt a policy that states we will inform and educate coaches, school administrators, youth athletes, and their parents and guardians of the nature, risk, and symptoms of concussions and head injuries, including the risk of continuing to play after a concussion or head injury. The Murfreesboro School Board shall require annual completion by all coaches, whether that coach is employed or a volunteer, and that is in the state law, and that school athletic directors go through safety education course programs that have been approved by the Tennessee Department of Health, that also include the Center for Disease Control and Prevention Concussion Signs and Symptoms Checklist. And if you go to the Department of Health's website, they do have a section for coaches and officials and parents to look at that will show, take you through that training. And they have brochures and pamphlets and forms that list this information that's been issued by the Center for Disease Control. Also, the Tennessee Department of Health's Concussion Recognition and Head Injury Safety Education Course, as I said, is available on their website. The program shall be include, but not limited to, current training in recognizing the signs and symptoms of potentially catastrophic head injuries, concussions, and injuries related to second impact syndrome, the necessity of obtaining proper medical attention for a person suspected of having a concussion, and the nature and risk of concussions, including the danger of continuing to play after sustaining a concussion, and the proper method and statutory requirement that must be satisfied in order for a youth athlete to return to play after they've suffered a concussion. And under state law, an student athlete is not allowed to return to play after they've suffered a concussion until a physician has released them to return and sent back written notice of that. The state law also requires that the board, on a yearly basis, issue a concussion and head injury information sheet to coaches and athletic directors prior to initiating practice and competition for the year, and that such information sheet also be provided to youth athletes and their parents or guardians before the athlete is allowed to begin play. And those forms have been developed by the Department of Health, and we have those forms to utilize. And the board is to maintain that documentation for three years under the state law, and the board must develop a policy that, regarding the immediate removal of any youth athlete who shows signs, symptoms, and behaviors consistent with a concussion from the activity or competition for evaluation by a licensed healthcare professional, if one is available, and if not, by the coach or a designated person at the actual activity. So this is the policy that's mandated by the state law, and we've got the forms that the Department of Health has issued in order to implement this policy.
Mrs. Rinear, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Barrett.
Mrs. Baker, I have a question. I think it's a great policy, and I'm glad, I'm glad the state has developed it, but I have a question as far as our system, and this may be for Dr. Gilbert. When it says that we will require on a yearly basis that this information is handed out to the athletes and the parents and guardians, and the coaches and everything, who in our system will handle that?
Mr. Ringstaff?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinear. Mr. Campbell?
And that may answer my question. Ralph is our athletic director.
He wears that hat, among others. Yes, he wears that hat, among others.
Mr. Barrett?
Quick item, 16, just CDC abbreviate right there, because I know, notice later on, we say CDC, line 16. And then, I'm glad we have this policy, you know, to help protect the health and safety of our children, and we had a nice lengthy discussion about this during our last work session, but I'm glad we have this now, so.
Is there no more questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Saika?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the approval, say aye?
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Campbell?
On an average, Ralph, how many situations like this have we had in our basketball?
Knock the wood so far we just can't even, and I'm aware of.
Mrs. Phillips?
Does Mr. Ringstaff have to go to the, through the training as well, as the athletic director?
Miss, would you like to? You're certainly more familiar with this than I am.
Yes, ma'am, I have gone through the training, and it's on a yearly basis. There's a 25-minute video course from the National Federation of High Schools that you must complete, and then there's a form that we have to sign, reading material, and then the form that the athlete has to sign initial, and then sign, and then the parent has to sign on the left-hand side.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
At our study session last time, you may recall that as a person who volunteers, as a coach somewhere else, I was a little reluctant about volunteers, having to volunteer more time to get training, but I've been told that the video, you know, that the course is not very long, so, and that the results and the consequences from it are outweigh that time, so I understand now. Thank you.
Mr. Washington?
Stay there, Ralph. One question, are you comfortable with the potential liability issues that could come from this particular issue, you know, and top them out?
Yes, sir. And this policy and the state law airs on the side of caution. Even if it's a possible concussion, we're going to require them to get a health physician's note to return to activity. And it's very educational for all volunteers and coaches. I've learned a lot throughout the education process, even though it's a short video, it's basically using common sense, but you err on the side of caution. If there's a possible situation, the athlete sets out.
Thank you. Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a website?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have it?
I can send it to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any more questions? All right, thank you. We miss not having you up here beside us.
I'm with DSP tonight, we're going to press.
That other hat, okay. Good enough.
Let me have to prove.
Okay, and the last policy you have before you tonight for first reading is board policy, did y'all make the motion and second?
We did.
Okay. It is board policy STU-58 regarding interscholastic athletics. This, there are no changes to this policy, it is just for your annual, biannual review and consideration.
Mr. Campbell?
I really hesitate to bring this up, but because it's, it's happened in other school systems as well, and I don't see it here, as I'm looking quickly, but those students who may be home schooled?
The way that the state law is written regarding home school students, that strictly deals with athletic programs that are connected with T double S double A, or the middle school association, and our program being in elementary system is not. So it's not encompassed in that state law.
And, oh, may I?
No, go ahead.
And just, just to commend our Parks and Rec Department, they have programs for home school children that are just supposed to be exceptional, so that's really nice.
Are there any other questions or comments before we ask for a motion? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Before you move to Action Item B, we have a presentation we'd like to do to explain to you about Mitchell Nielsen. We do have a short PowerPoint, and I will make it shorter even than the PowerPoint is, but we are moving, Robin Newell has worked very hard to bring the primary school and the elementary school together into one school. It is seen by the state as one school as far as accountability. One of the issues, well, two issues, really. One falls with use of title money. She is restricted with her title money as far as combining it for the entire school. She cannot do that with two school names. The other has to do with, of course, things like software, you're having to buy two site licenses, but probably more important than that is just the need for those students to feel together in one school. She has faculty meetings that are, all together is one faculty meetings. They have assembly programs that are one school, and so we wanted to talk to you tonight about what we're undertaking at Mitchell Nielsen with partnership from MTSU. At Mitchell Nielsen, we will set up what's called the Collaborative Learning and Leadership Institute. In fact, one of the buildings that is between Mitchell Nielsen, the two campuses will be used by MTSU for that, and so we're excited about that. The idea is, again, with our philosophy of the whole child, finding those talents, those gifts, those leadership skills that are there within each child and developing them. The partners are there before you. We have the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences, B Purdue, who is the development officer of that college, has been extremely active with this plan, and also we have Murfreesboro City Schools. Within the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences, you have those six departments, and they are large departments. So when we think about what MTSU brings, really, they are looking for using us as a site where we help create, they help create new and better outcomes for intractable issues that are real-life issues for their students, also leadership that makes a difference in the community, multidisciplinary field labs and research that will happen there at Mitchell Nielsen, and then laying the foundation for developing the next practices for K-12 education. There are some of the folks that are in the different colleges. Their expertise ranges from psychology to nursing to social work, to health and human performance, to kinesthetic work, so you have just a wide variety there, and then even more, so that you have, in the social work, you have those folks that are already engaged in us. As far as the dean's office, they are offering the dean's leadership series, and I've had the privilege of participating in one of, a part of that series. They are also going to be soliciting public and financial support for this program. They will be facilitating community engagement and partnerships and engaging MCS alumni, and particularly the Mitchell Nielsen alumni. The whole point of this, as you know, in Murfreesboro City, we really are interested in looking beyond high school for our students, and we see the Mitchell Nielsen site is a real place where that can happen with partnership with MTSU. It is an initiative of the chamber, along with chambers all over these United States, to develop a workforce which has to do with students who are academically prepared, but also are developing those leadership skills that we need in our workforce today. As early as the age of eight, we know that children are already deciding what they're going to do as far as their profession. Part of this will be in letting our teachers be aware of more of the professions that are in the community and future possibilities, and also of our students, so that we're really looking for capacity for lifelong learning, talents to be uncovered both in our teachers and also in our students, as well as leadership to be developed. So there, again, the common vision that we have with MTSU is gaining the academic foundations and also the character traits and the analytical skills that are necessary for the future workforce. The vision is simple, within every child and adult, there are talents, gifts, and leadership skills. This partnership will unveil, mold, and expand them, and you have two goals there. We went to a school in Bowling Green, and I'm going to let Robin talk about that in just a second, but we went to a school in Bowling Green that permeated leadership, and when you walked in that school, this was the painting that was there, "We foresee at Mitchell Nielsen there to be quotes throughout the building and inside classrooms that really, when you walk in, it will, it will say what it is. It's all about the leadership." At the particular school that we visit, even on the restroom walls, this was actually on the mirror. Obviously, I'm standing in front of the restroom. Yes, we did. But the idea is, when you say, "Who is the leader?", and the student sees themselves there, and then we saw this also throughout on bulletin boards, and so that you will see at Mitchell Nielsen. The foundation key character traits, and this is called CALL, it's kind of the acronym, Community Pride, Appreciating Everyone, Lifelong Learning, and Leading By Example. We have broken those down, each one of those to roles that might be seen in the school, to roles that might be seen in the classroom. In the classroom, every student will have a role, and then also traditions that are developed within that school that have to do with the community. At the school where we visited, you have, on the left there, you see they have done a service learning project with animal rescue, and on the right side, the Student Lighthouse Team is responsible for designing service learning projects for that particular school. Appreciating everyone has to do with diversity, not just being celebrated, or not just being valued, but also celebrated, so it really has to do with the way we treat each other. Part of this has to do with clubs and activities, so you'll see clubs and activities at Mitchell Nielsen. And again, at the school that we visited, there were all kinds of clubs that were there for, for all the children, and we anticipate this at Mitchell Nielsen. Lifelong Learning, a legacy club where the older students decided what their legacy would be for that school, community leaders, speakers, and also career readiness and self-monitoring, so that the students were tracking their own academic growth, and that's extremely important. We're doing some of it already. You'll see us continuing that at all of our schools. Leading by Example, again, you have some examples there of things, hallway huddles have to do with teachers coming together in the morning and, and talking about what they're going to do for the day and just. they're going to do for the day and just sharing their own lives. And with the leadership in this particular school, that we have school-wide leaders. Robin already has a, a student council, and she can discuss that with you, and then also Leaders of the Month. Then Measurements of Success, not only with academic success, but also with behavioral success. And we believe that the success of a child depends on all. So it's really a holistic approach with the family, with industry, with higher education, with the community, along with us. What we know is that nothing motivates a child more than when learning is valued by schools and families, community working together in partnership. These forms of involvement do not happen by accident or even by invitation. They happen by explicit strategic intervention, and that's what you will find at Mitchell Nielsen beginning next year. I'm going to let Robin share with you what she has seen, what she pictures for this school, and talk about your faculty and how they're feeling about this, what you've done with them, so if you can share that with us. Thank you.
I think if we put this in a nutshell, what this is going to do is empower our students. We're already giving them the very best education they can get. This is going to instill in them some confidence, and I think once they go out into the world with having been through the leadership program at Mitchell Nielsen, there will be no stopping them. When we went to the school in Bowling Green, you know, it's a leadership school, and I wondered what that would look like. We have ideas about what we might do, but I didn't know what going into a school, how I would know that it was a leadership school. There was absolutely no doubt whatsoever that that was a leadership school. It permeated everything from the minute we walked in to the door until we left. There were students that greeted us, they shook our hand and looked us in the eye and welcomed us to their school. They gave us a tour of the building, they were so proud. We walked into, there were probably 150 teachers and principals and administrators that were visiting that day, and we walked into the school, the cafeteria, I mean, the gym, and every student in the school was sitting at the, on the floor. And a kindergarten student led, opened and led that meeting. And, and so to have a five-year-old child stand up in front of three or 400 people and say, welcome to our school, and he was so cute, he said, can you believe it's me up here? But that kind of confidence, you know, I want the students at Mitchell Nielsen to, to have choices when they leave about what they want to do with their lives, and, and I, I want nothing to stand in their way, and I think this is a way that we can really empower those students. My teachers are excited, they're nervous, they're, they have questions. What, what will this look like? How will I fit in? Where will this, how will this impact me? What, what gifts and talents do I have? I've got some teachers that have questions, and I have some that are driving me crazy with ideas, which is a good thing. But, but the, the, their brains are, the wheels are turning, and, and it's exciting to see what can happen. And I think it will be real important for children to, to have that empowerment and, and to take some ownership for what they're doing and what we expect from them. I think it'll be great.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, it's not only the school teachers that have, you know, my wheels are turning with ideas right now, too. Good, good. And so I'll be sending you some emails, because I'm very excited about this, and I, I love the idea of empowering the children, and I think that Ms. Newell is the perfect person to lead this program. The, tell me about, you know, it's great to have it all on paper about the collaboration with MTSU. How's it going to work on a day-to-day basis?
Well, we, we've been working with P, B Purdue. She went with us to the school in Bowling Green, and then we've had several meetings with her and emails back and forth to, you know, Dr. Gilbert showed you the list of the different schools that are in that college. And so we are going to have some classes. Those students will be on our campus, MTSU students will be on our campus in that Family Resource Center. We're going to turn that into a classroom for them. So they will be there on our campus, modeling that kind of leadership for our students. We want them to come in and speak to our students about that, about what it means to be a, a leader and, and how that has played out in their particular lives, and, and to show them what kind of choices that they can make beyond their school years. We'll have social work interns there taking classes. And she's, she's also working with some sponsorship and some corporate sponsors working with that as well. So we hope to, to really build that up. And, you know, I would love for other people from around Tennessee to come visit our school, like we did to Bowling Green, you know, to, to see that that's what's going on here and want to come look at what's going on at Mitchell Nielsen.
Okay, so you just used a word that makes me nervous. That you're, the person that will be working in corporate sponsorship will be working with Ms. Trail on his request, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, Lisa has been, she went with us, too. We had a caravan. Don't, I won't say anything else about it. She drove.
Oh, we know.
Thanks. So you feel sorry for it. But there, there were quite a crew of us that, that went up there, and, and of course, Lisa Trail was, she's been very involved in this, and...
But one of my pet peeves is to be asking the same people for money all the time.
Oh, sure.
So that's, that's what I wanted to...
Yes, I think we've covered all our bases. We want to make him add back.
Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips, and then Mr. Campbell.
I just have to say that one, that Dr. Gilbert has an absolute genius for coming up with ideas that are innovative, with strong use of community partners. This is a legacy that you have developed over all the years. And I remember when you first mentioned this, the idea of a leadership focus for the Mitchell Nielsen School, that, I mean, that was so exciting to me. I, I just really, really got excited, and I can't wait to see what you're going to do. I know you're going to do an absolutely awesome job, Ms. Newell. The only thing, now here's my negative milli part coming up. This is what I hear parents say occasionally, so I want to share that with you, just so, just so you'll be aware. I, I know that part of the focus of leadership, of course, is working on service projects. And I hear sometimes parents say, oh, my gosh, my kids have too many service. I mean, we've got to put in service hours for Boy Scouts, or Girl Scouts, or this organization, or youth churches. I mean, and we want to make sure we're not, we're not wearing the kids out with too many additional outside-of-school service hour requirements. So I just, I just want to throw that out.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and thank you. I remember your excitement when we mentioned this, and I want to thank you for saying that, because Mr. Anderson looked at me with real doubt in his eyes when you mentioned what a genius I am.
Well, you do, you really do.
But we're, we're excited about it. I think that what we saw in Bowling Green, whether we go with that particular model, but I think that the difference in that school and Mitchell Nielsen is that Mitchell Nielsen will be so much stronger because of MTSU. When you look at the list of folks, and when you look at that particular college, there's a lot of research that happens there. There's the leadership training that comes out of that college, and we really see that as a benefit here. The benefit to MTSU is we're providing them with real world, just as surely as we're trying to get preparation for teachers to be in the real world. This also lets them see how does this leadership model that MTSU will develop with us really play out with the children. As far as service learning, I almost think about it more as project-based learning. And with project-based learning, you're really taking those academic ideas and applying them to real world. I see that happening here. I don't see that there would be, we will have clubs, some of those clubs probably will be after school, but I, but we already have that kind of thing with Club Marvel and some of the other things that we do. So I really see this, the, the service learning, when we talk about that, I talk about, I think about those linked strategically with the academics. So that what they provide, the concrete why of what's happening in the classroom.
Well, and I'd like to see that the students see that, that learning at school is not just something they do at school, that it's, that, that service is separate from that. You know, I'd like to see that integrated with what, with the learning that they're doing at school, and not something that they do after school.
Okay, I think I understand.
I don't want, I don't want them to think that, that what we're learning at school doesn't have any connection with anything outside of school. So we'd like to incorporate as much of that within the school days we can.
Sounds good.
Mr. Campbell, and then Mr. Barrett.
Sounds like a good program. Really does. Concerned, I'm sorry, thoughts, not necessarily concerned. I know how teachers are, and you know how teachers are. And there will be those, maybe, that will be concerned about doing, not necessarily extras, but we're going to call them extras, okay, with leadership, so forth and so on. And then at the same time, are going to be worried about those numbers in May and those test scores. And I'm sure you have thought about this a lot. Those teachers are going to be comfortable, I'm assuming that y'all have discussed, with others being in their classroom. You know, there are those teachers that don't want student teachers, because they don't want to give up time, because they're concerned about what their test scores are going to be in May. And I like this, because to me, it's getting away a little bit from that magic number in May that I refer to, as you well know. And I hope everybody is on board, and I hope it doesn't affect anything that everybody else is going to be judging. The people at Mitchell Nielsen know what's going on, but I don't want somebody else to judge and say, well, if you hadn't done that, your scores would have been better. And that's something I'm sure you've thought of, and your teachers have thought of, because it will be a, a factor, somebody will come up with that in May of 2015.
Well, we think daily, hourly, minute by minute, what's best for kids and how we can help them be successful. That test in May measure, is a small window to measure that. You know, we, we, of course, it's a big deal, but we don't focus everything we do on that particular test, because we've got to get them to that point. So we work really hard to make sure that that test is just another little assessment that they take, because we're working so hard to get them there.
Well, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with you, because I think something's that way. I'm not going to get on that soapbox tonight, okay?
I think, I think that...
You understand where I'm coming from.
When you look at project-based learning, when you look at service learning, and I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I do know that with the schools that utilize that, you're going to find no problem with academics. In fact, they will enhance at any time that you're working with children or adults to help, and I don't want to use the word self-esteem, because that's been overused, but perseverance, all those characteristics. If you talk to the business community, they'll, they may start out talking about what they need, or workers that can add and subtract, but it's not too far down the road in that conversation, do you hit things like perseverance, teamwork, consideration of others, creativity, innovation, and those are the things that, that this really drives toward. Murfreesboro City is becoming a school district that's known by the energy that's in it. And what I have found is that when teachers are working on something that is valuable, that they can see a, a real need for it, and that they can feel worthwhile, which is what this is about, it's not just the students, it's also the teachers. What gifts do they have that they can bring to the surface? Then that has a real meaning, and people will work for a district that, that cares about them and wants to see them succeed, along with the children, much more readily than they will, well, one that's just focused on the test scores.
Well, the old, the old saying, the proof is in the pudding, and I guess the proof will be there, I hope. Good proof.
You can, you can bank on it.
Mr. Barrett.
Well, that time I did that, I was at a casino and I lost.
Sorry, I missed it.
You bet on the wrong thing.
Good point.
Well, it's always great, we can save the district money, especially with something as a name change. I think that's good. And then it sounds like you're, you'll have more flexibility with this, with this approach. And it just looks like a lot of work went into this, and it just, I can't wait to see how it develops, so.
Dr. Brown?
Well, first of all, thank Ms. Newell for the comments that you made, because education is not a salvo. Education is just a tool to prepare people to live their entire life, and there's so much more to that preparation than just a test in May. So I think this is very critical. And I'm hoping that it's in Dr. Gilbert's plan, that this is an alpha site, and that we will take the best of what we learn at Mitchell Nielsen and roll that throughout all of the other schools, so.
Mrs. Renier?
I think this may be a reflection of the fact that Dr. Gilbert and I are serving on the Chamber's Workforce Development Committee, or Task Force, I guess. And we see the importance, they talk so much about the upper-level high school and making sure that they're aware of the fact that we have mechatronics now at some of our high schools and so on and so forth. She and I and a few other people see the beauty of the fact that we need to start with the younger children, and I, that this is such a good reflection and such a great way to get it started. So I'm really excited for you.
Mrs. Phillips?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Renier, because I think that's an excellent point. I really appreciate that point. And also, and also to echo Dr. Brown's comment about it being an alpha site, that ran through my head, but I didn't say it, and I thought it's good to take the best of this, whatever we gather as the best practices for this, and see if it can be integrated into other schools, so.
Yay.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
I'm asking her if I can say it while you... Okay, yes. Just wanted to remind you that the Mitchell Nielsen will have an, an open enrollment, not just students that are in our zone will be able to take advantage of this great opportunity. We will be accepting applications for students who'd like to come and be part of the great things that are going on in Mitchell Nielsen, so just wanted to remind you of that.
Ms. Phillips, and then Ms. Smith.
Just remind me, okay, Mitchell Nielsen will still maintain its zone?
Yes, yes.
And all, and no zone child would be, not, I mean, all zone children are welcome?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, and then any remaining places are open to kids outside the zone?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Ms. Smith?
And how, how would busing take place with the children outside the zone?
They will have to provide their own transportation, but, and it's, until we are full, they will be allowed to come in.
Okay. Is there any more questions or comments on Number B? Because we're going to have to have a motion and a second on the approval of the name change for Mitchell Nielsen. Any question? Yes, ma'am? It's on here.
I know it's on here, but I didn't think it was actually discussed.
Well, we hadn't got there, I don't think. We went through something else, or they had a, they had a presentation. So if you have a question, Mrs. Newell is here and Dr. Gilbert's here.
Are you going, you're going to explain it, right?
Oh, the Mitchell Nielsen School?
Yeah.
Well, it, it really goes back to what I said previously. When you look at the state, the students who have been across the street have fed into Mitchell Nielsen. If you're looking at test scores, they get the same scores. So it is, it is a feeder site. And what Robin has tried to do and has done an excellent job with is really pull those two together as one school, because it really is one school. You have the same students that, that over across the street are going to do a bridging ceremony, in fact, she has, in, in the spring, right? Where the students walk across the street, because their brothers and sisters are already there. There is also a financial, if you look at the finances, this year we had a situation where Robin really needed to use more title funds at the elementary school and was not able to because of the breakdown of the title. Right now, the title funds are going to have to go to those two sites. With the, with joining together, it would be viewed as the state, by the state as one site, and therefore the title funds could be used wherever it was needed, from pre-K on through. And then, and also with our technology, what we're finding is we're having to have two site licenses. So your, your K-2 is having to have a site license, your 3-6 is having to have a site license. So financially, it makes sense. But again, I think the, the bigger part, as far as we're concerned, is just that it is one school, and is treated as such in every way, except name.
So you, we need to have a motion?
It would be my recommendation that you have that as one school, and it would be Mitchell Nielsen School.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second for the naming, to identify Mitchell Nielsen Elementary and Primary as one school, Mitchell Nielsen School. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Here and now, we'll go to Number C.
Okay. C is to rename the Discovery School, it reads Rogers, simply the Discovery School, and this actually comes at the recommendation of the, the principal there. The idea that, that the Discovery School is the Discovery School, whether it... whether it's at Reeves-Rodgers, whether it's at Bellwood, wherever it is, but that that would be the name then, the Discovery School, so that we would not have the addition of location there.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Gilbert?
Fully supportive.
Then we'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry. Hold up, back up.
Where are you coming from?
I don't have either.
I don't have any.
I'm on the agenda.
I just have to keep up and roll back.
It's on the agenda.
We're under action item or C.
I don't have an agenda except what's on my laptop.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh.
I make the motion that the name be Discovery School.
I'll second.
I have a comment.
Let's go. If it's not going to change the motion, I'll go ahead and get the motion in.
Oh.
Make your comment.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had a, I had a comment.
But it wasn't a question. Reena, that's a question. Questions will change the motion.
Well...
But was it going, I asked, was it going to change the motion? And you said, uh-uh.
Uh, well, change the motion? No, but, I mean, I, I, it was applicable to it, though.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, the, I just want to throw out, I really personally have no problem with changing, with the name being like it is. My only concern is that there are people in the community. Let me understand what you're saying. So, it would say, the Discovery School, if it move, when it moves to the Bellwood location, it would no longer say the Discovery School at Bellwood? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it would be the Discovery School.
And would the Bellwood name be completely dropped?
Right.
My only concern is that there are a lot, there's a lot of community allegiance to particular names and schools. People, you know, "Oh, I went to Bellwood, oh, I went to Hobgood." And I think that, while it personally doesn't bother me, I think there's a lot of community feeling and loyalty and allegiance to a particular facility and a name. And I'm wondering if, if what we gain is worth what we lose. By dropping the Bellwood, are we, are we losing more than we gain? And, and it's just a thought to throw out there. So, it's something you might want to think about, you know?
Are there any other comment?
Do we made a comment?
Well, you don't, you don't have to. I mean, but people in the community do.
Miss, Miss Smith, I'll go ahead and tell yours and then Dr. Brown.
I understand where, where you're coming from. And there's a difference, in my opinion, between Bellwood and Reeves-Rodgers because, as far as I know, I'm sure Bellwood is a neighborhood. Reeves-Rodgers, those are people that the school was named for. And that's, and so that's what we, farther down the road, we're going, we're talking about changing, you know, moving that preschool name. And I think it's important to keep the names of people. But it is, it's just kind of, Discovery School at Reeves-Rodgers, it's just exhausting. Just name the school the Discovery School and not the campus site. That's what it is.
Could be the Bellwood Discovery School.
It's already been that. It moved, it's been Discovery School that Reeves-Rodgers announced back at Bellwood.
Dr. Brown.
Well, I know that we can become attached to certain things, but as someone who went to Reeves-Rodgers and had three children who went to Reeves-Rodgers, if the situation was reversed and we were discussing whether we would name it the Discovery School or the Discovery School at Reeves-Rodgers, I would be perfectly happy to have it the Discovery School. I would not feel any attachment to keeping that particular name, so.
It was just something I threw out there. I, I personally have no particular attachment, but I know that there are people in the community that do. So, anyway, that's, just throw that out there. I'm, I'm good with whatever.
The next act, action item is to identify the preschool program as the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program. Originally, the preschool program was identified as Ruth Bowden Preschool Program. It was then associated with the school. And what I'm suggesting is that it moved back to being identified as the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program. Again, Ruth Bowden was a tremendous lady. We all know that her legacy with Classroom on Wheels and her work with parents. And so, I would like to keep that program as it was when it was originally created as the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program.
Any questions or comments concerning the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program, keeping the name?
Mr. Campbell.
So then, all of our preschools will be known as the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program?
Yes, and they were, as they were previously.
As they were, okay.
Right.
However, they're going to be at different sites?
Right, as they were previously.
What is the, what is the advantage?
I think the advantage of it...
Just remembering the...
Well, I do think that there's, I do think there is legitimacy with having her name associated with it. I think that you have the preschools that you have located. For example, we have three offsites that, that are part of this and then you have the separate sites. So, I think when you look at the entire preschool program, there is validity with keeping her name associated with them.
Miss Smith.
Will they be a director at the Ruth Bowden Preschool Program?
Not at the present time, no.
Are you looking to have one?
Not at the present time.
Mrs. Rainier.
I think it's a lovely, lovely legacy to have Ms. Bowden's name attached to the preschool and I, I appreciate it.
Mr. Barrett.
So, each of the preschool programs will fall under the principal for, for that school? Okay.
And the offsite, too, they fall under?
They would fall under the principals also, as they did originally. So, for example, when the preschools were established, you had preschools first, well, you had preschool at Patterson Park, for example, that was identified with, with Bradley. You had preschools at, when Northfield was established, they were, of course, in the school. But then you also had, the Oakland Site was, was associated with Mitchell Nielsen. The Franklin Heights Site was associated with, with Bellwood at that time.
So, will it still be associated with Bellwood?
No.
Who will it be with?
Uh, it would be associated with Mitchell Nielsen. Now, where those fall is going to depend on what the numbers, after we have the registration. But currently, what we're projecting, that's where they would be.
Miss Smith.
Is this an inappropriate time? Or should we, should I defer my question about the current Bellwood faculty to other business?
Can't come on to other business while we're on preschool. Do you have a question for Dr. Gilbert? Or you have just a question?
I, I do, I, I want to shed light on a conversation and that is about what is happening with the current faculty. So, if you could, there have been so many questions in the community and it's, it's hard to explain what, what your intention is.
As far as that particular faculty, we will have faculty across the district that will be moving, that will be transferring, just like we're looking at, and I'm going to, I'm looking at you, we'll be moving faculty, we'll not need as many faculty at Pittard, Scales.
The schools that are going to get smaller, of course, we don't need as many faculty members at. And, and Scales and Pittard are two of the major ones that we're going to have to drop the number of total faculty members there because it's the biggest area where we drop students.
So, basically, those, those teachers will either, there's some of them that are going through the process now requesting transfer. Of course, that's happening at every school. We are getting transfer requests. So, the teachers at, at Bellwood, just as the other teachers would, they are welcome to do transfer requests or we will be placing them, they will have their positions, but we'll be placing them at particular sites. I've already heard from several of the faculty. I've had, heard from a couple of the faculty that I'm, I'm not as concerned with that faculty as I might have been, as far as their perceptions at the time.
So, so my understanding is that they, to clarify what you just said is that the Bellwood faculty will be waiting for transfer at the same time that, as if they were at Reeves-Rodgers or Scales waiting for overall...
That's what I'm projecting right now. Now, if we can do it sooner, that's fine, but we are going to be looking at numbers and where, where we're going to need those preschools. Right now, I'm foreseeing them needing them as we projected. I don't perceive that those numbers will shift any.
Miss Phillips and then Mrs. Rainier.
I, I'm glad to have this subject come up. I know there's, you know, there have been so many community questions about this. I just want to assure the public that we're all, many, I know that many board members have been asking questions and, and waiting on information. And we are, we are really paying attention to your questions and what you have to say. And we appreciate hearing from our, our people out there and, and listening to your concerns. So, you know, I just, I just wanted them to know that they are being heard and, and people know what's going on.
And I did, I did write an email to the faculty that I know that Ms. Payne shared because I did receive some responses from faculty members that appreciated that and at least a couple that assured me that they understood that there were things that we had to look at and had confidence that we would do the right thing. And I appreciated those emails very much.
Mrs. Rainier and then Mr. Campbell.
I know you said this is kind of based with enrollment projections after registration. And I heard Mrs. Trail on the radio, along with Mr. March, yesterday, maybe it was. What was the registration day that every child has to register? Would you repeat that for everybody?
I would if I had it in front of me. March 24th, okay, thank you.
March 24th. And then kindergarten registration is May? May the what?
Eighteenth, ninth.
Okay, May eighth, ninth.
And if you have questions, if you will get them to me, I'll be, I'll be ready to answer those for you at the next meeting or on, by phone call.
Did that take care of what you had, Mrs. Rainier?
Yes, I just thought that the public probably needed to know that date if we're going to be waiting for, for that timeframe. So, we all need to know that every child, upcoming first through sixth grader, has to register because of the rezoning and everything this year.
Mr. Campbell.
We talk about projections and we're concerned about projections. However, when we went into this rezoning situation that we got into, we have already projected the number of students per school, which would include preschool as well as kindergarten and so forth and so on. So, I would assume then, by this time, we've got an idea of how many preschool students are going to be at Scales or how many are they going to be at another school. So, some of these teachers that are at Bellwood today in preschool could pretty well be told that, where they would be next year in preschool. Would I, would that be a good assumption?
If you do not have transfers that are wishing to move, and I haven't looked at the transfers at all, that would be wishing to move into a K-12...
The final date for the transfers is February the 28th, which is Friday. We're giving them until Friday to request the transfer, all teachers.
Okay, so, all right, hypothetical situation, all right? I'm a teacher and I want to transfer. And I request a transfer. But I'm not a preschool teacher. Only those preschool teachers would be the ones that would be transferring to another school with a preschool class. So, what you're telling me is, those preschool teachers that are today at Bellwood, if they have requested a transfer to another school or to one of the, like, one of the schools that's going to have preschool, then that's what you're looking at. Then after that, you will take the other teachers at Bellwood and assign them?
Yes, and I, yes, yes. Just, just as we would any other teacher.
Okay. Now, what about our, rest of our staff at Bellwood? Our kitchen people, our EAs, our MDAs?
The office staff?
Our office staff, whether it be bookkeeper, secretary, or whatever? Our principal, assistant principal? What, what, where are we with those folks?
After the month of February, then we're going to start looking at all the pieces of the puzzle and start placing those pieces.
Placing those?
Those, the pieces of the puzzle.
You said those teachers?
Teachers and classified staff.
And classified staff.
But you're also going to have, and across the district, you're going to have that situation. So, so it's, it's not, so it is a big puzzle and it is putting the pieces together. And it is looking at and talking with principals about what they need as far as their needs and talking about what teachers that they, that, that they're going to accept the transfer on and looking at what teachers are going to be rehired and what other folks are going to be rehired. So, the whole hiring process will be very similar to what it is every year.
Okay. I, I guess what my, my concern at this point is those staff, and I'm going to go all the way from the principal to the, the teachers, the EAs, the cafeteria staff and everybody. How long is it going to be before those people know that, where they're going to be next school year? Because if we don't let them know fairly quick, we're doing them a major disservice because we're not letting them know anything. I mean, tenured teachers, for example, when they could be applying for jobs other places. And they're, every day, we don't let them know, we're putting them another day behind because this young man is graduating from school and he's ready to go to work and he's going to teach. And he knows that, so he's already got his application filled out and turned in somewhere.
The way I look at this is really, it's not a lot different than any other year because every year, there are adjustments. And so, this year, there will also be adjustments. And, and we will let them know as soon as we can. Right now, I've got to have them focused on instruction. And so, when I, when, when you think about this year and the movement that will happen, in many ways, I don't see it different than a lot of other years because every year, we have shifts across schools, we have folks. But as far as the tenured teachers, they are tenured. As far as the, the first through fourth grade, in fact, you all will be, be looking at tenure this year for the first time in a couple of years. So, as far as the shifts that have to be made, it's, it's really not a whole lot different than any other year and that every year, we have to look at numbers.
But, but...
In all due respect, it's different than it was last year.
Okay.
Because people weren't worried about where they were going to go. Then we weren't making, we didn't rezone last year. If I taught at Reeves-Rodgers last year, I pretty well was assured I was going to be back at Reeves-Rodgers this year. But we've got, and, and it's not only at Bellwood, but it's across the system.
It is. And I, and I guess what I look at is, is every year going to have some retainers? Every year, you're going to have some new people coming in? And what we will try to do is try to match the schools, those, those transfer requests, to look at them carefully and try to give as many folks as we can those requests. What, what we have to be careful of in the bigger picture and the difference this year is not to deplete any one school of a massive number of, of teachers.
I agree.
And so, that's one reason, that's one reason it is one big puzzle of, of trying to accommodate those teachers that want to transfer or those principals that feel certain teachers need to be moved and also looking at tenure, looking at, at renewals and looking at, at numbers of students.
Well, I had, I guess I'm going to say, I'm not going to say unfortunate because it worked out very well. It's what, what our staff wanted when I was still in the administration. But in 2001, I went through this. But in 2001, I went through this. And in 2001, I saw over 100 teachers and 150 staff not really know until almost the last minute. And the turmoil that they went through because they didn't know. And all they wanted is somebody to say, "You're going to be at Bellwood, uh, Bellwood next year." "You're going to be at Case and Lane next year." That's all they want to know. And then they're ready to go to work. But the unknown is not a pleasant thing.
I, I appreciate that. And, and I will.
I'm really concerned about those people.
Okay. And, and I will, we'll get that done as fast as we can. Because I hear what you're saying. And, and I've, I've heard it expressed by teachers and, and I've asked them, I've told them as soon as we can, we'll let them know.
See, but we did, we knew a bunch of hours were going to Wilson and a bunch were going to Siegel Middle.
Right.
But they weren't real sure who. And that was the turmoil.
Ms. Phillips?
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Campbell and Ms. Smith and Dr. Gilbert. I, I know you're hearing us and I appreciate that. I just, you, you said something I just had a question about. You said that the transfer request has to be approved by the principal. Is that so?
No, the transfer request, the way we have done transfer requests this year, and Mr. Ringstaff, you may as well stand up again. The transfer request prior, in prior years, they had to, in prior years, they had to be approval. You want to explain the difference?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a very simple process now. We send it out to all teachers and classified staff. And all they have to do is complete their name, the present location, the present grade level that they're teaching and propose schools that they would like to go to in order of preference. And that's no principal signature required.
And how is it determined whether they get the request or not?
Basically, we'll be looking at, and, and I'm, this is something we haven't talked a whole lot about, but basically, what we'll be doing is looking where we need numbers and where we need transfers or where the transfer requests have come from and seeing if, if we can match those up. If, if I have 40 of the teachers at Case and Lane that want to transfer out of Case and Lane, those 40 are not going to be honored. If I have a few and it matches up with what we need in other schools, then I'm fine with that. But it will be, but it will, it will be done. The principals will play a role in that they know their schools and they know who may need to be moved and who's critical to stay and why.
Well, so, people may be moved that have not transferred or requested a transfer, is what you're saying?
Every year, there, there may be that possibility.
Okay. And, but now, in the preschools, a couple of things. Would you mind sharing with the public what sites the preschools will be at? And if you happen to have that handy. And also, I mean, that is determined, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then, but since we kind of know where they're going to be, it would seem like it might be easier.
To go ahead and make those.
Make those.
Probably will be. I want to see what the transfers look like. And then, then the other, well, every year, there is the option, though, of principals not to renew. And so, that does not have to have labor on. So, I'm going to, I don't know that that'll play a role, but that may play a role. That's realistic anywhere. I mean, that's the principal's decision. And that decision isn't always made this early in the year. So, so I will do as much as I can to assure that, but I don't know that I can totally assure that until that decision's made. And that's a decision that doesn't need to be made right now. Okay, sites. And I don't have that with me. So, um, come, oh, thank you. Thank you. We're looking at Black Fox, Hobgood, John Pittard, Mitchell Nelson, Reeves Rogers and the offsites.
And would you share with us how those sites were selected?
Those sites are selected based our, with our, our preschools, we have two principal methods of funding. One is title and one is the state-funded preschool for the lottery. With the state-funded preschool, you're looking at low socioeconomic primarily. With the title, you are not looking at that. You are looking at a need that the, the students are all tested and these would be the children who may not qualify socio-economically, but they may qualify as far as an academic deficit that needs to be filled. And I hate to use the term deficit, but that's really the determining factor. So, basically, those are the two methods of funding. As far as how these particular sites are located, when we look at Case and Lane, for example, and we look at some of the areas in town, we, we are projecting that these particular sites will better serve the students and most of the applicants that we have rather than some others.
And.
And also the, also the space.
Yeah, and that, that was my follow-up question. For example, I remember that there used to be a, a couple of preschool classes at Northfield. And they typically have extra classroom space. Are you not expecting that?
Well, at Northfield, no. We feel like that with having the preschool at Mitchell Nelson, also having the Oakland site there, that that probably will handle that. We also are looking at some, we also are looking at some other classrooms at Northfield. And we feel that probably it would be better not to add preschools, regularly add preschools at that particular site for various reasons.
Okay. Just curious, I was just wondering how you determine which sites. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, Mr. Campbell and Ms. Raniere.
Back up from preschool conversation with Ms. Gilbert. You were talking about the principals would be involved and the transferring, not, I mean that, how would the principals be empowered in hiring? That's what I want to know.
When we sit down, and I may ask Robin to come up on this one. The central office and the principals work very closely right now with working with teachers and with professional development with those teachers, with knowing those teachers and they're fit, with, with knowing the qualities of the teachers and their strengths. And so, every year now, it, it almost has become a collaborative effort between principal and central office, for example. And Robin, I am going to ask you to come up to the podium. For example, Robin may tell me, Linda, I really think that this, this teacher might be better at this, at this grade level or maybe even better at this school. And I don't know how to describe what we do, but, but it is a collaborative discussion.
So, it, it is. And who, so if Ms. Newell has an applicant, you, you would review the applicant for your school?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have total hiring.
You're totally empowered with the hires for your school, whether they're transferred from other schools or not.
Right. But we also look at it, the strengths of our central office staff to, I've got some openings, some interim openings at my school immediately. And I will call on people from the central office to help me interview those people as well because I want their input and their expertise. I'm not naive enough to believe that I am.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? So.
My deal is I want you, I want you to be doing the interviewing.
Yes.
And getting input.
Yes, absolutely. That, that is not a question.
Right.
The other thing that's happening, though, with the principals, it's kind of interesting because a lot of times, if Robin has interviewed somebody now that she can't hire because she doesn't have a place and Dawn does have somebody has a place, what you'll find is that communication back and forth, which is really pretty cool.
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, a couple of years ago, I hired or interviewed someone who was fabulous, but I didn't think was a good fit for our school. And I called another school and she was hired on and is, and loving it. And most of the time, what we do, if we have an opening, we will call each other and say, okay, who have you got that's completing an interim that you were really impressed with, but you didn't have a spot for that, that I can take? Because we are not in competition with each other. We want to do what's best for all students in Murfreesboro. So, if Dawn's got a dynamite teacher and he, he, we've taken teachers from each other. One of my interventionists was a classroom teacher at his building and one of my former PE teachers now works for him. And we, we are sharing and making sure that, that we do what's best for the kids in Murfreesboro.
The other thing that you'll have happen is, is, and I can think of at least three instances in the last couple of years where in a particular school, you'll, you'll find that there may be a, a first-year teacher that may not, may not be excelling at that particular school, but it may be because of the match in the school. And so, so quite frequently, the, when I'll sit down with the principals and I'll say, okay, tell me, tell me what you're seeing. And they'll say, Linda, I think this would be a dynamite teacher at a certain place. Well, if, if there's an opening someplace else and Dawn, for example, calls and say, says, hey, it, it may be a case of my saying, okay, there's a teacher you might want to take a look at. Call, call Robin, see what you think. And we've, we've seen instances there where careers have been developed and they're, they're doing remarkably well. So, it's kind of hard to explain how it works. It's all a big circle, I guess.
But it makes us look good for our people to be successful. So, we do everything we can to make sure that they are.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, Ms. Raniere.
Well, just because I asked for a transfer, that doesn't guarantee me a transfer, correct?
No. Ms. Raniere?
My question was going back to the preschool sites. Did those five school sites include Mr. Marlin's classes?
No.
And where are they?
Those are at, those are at Northfield, Reeves Rogers, Scales and Irma Siegel right now.
So, you have dual types of classrooms at Reeves Rogers? Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't have that wrong. Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, we'll need to entertain a motion to approve the preschool program to remain, the Ruth Bounton preschool program.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any disapproved?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much. At, at this time, we, we thought that there were several updates that we really needed to give you, that they, they were timely and some will be longer than others, but, but we think it's important. And we think it's important for the public to know what's happening as far as some of the updates in addition to what you've already seen with Mitchell Nelson. So, at this time, I'd like for Dawn to come up and I don't know if, oh, there she is. Cindy Smith Walters, just a delight to see you, by the way. I've had the privilege of working with Cindy for a lot of years when, I guess I met you when I was here the first time.
I think we were both five years old.
But she is, she's one of these ladies, and people laugh when I say this, but she doesn't look really smart, but she is a genius. She is. Cindy Smith Walters has more knowledge about, when people are really intelligent, they are just common sense, but she's brilliant. Cindy, Cindy heads up the Center for Environmental Studies at MTSU. I'm not even go, going to go over the awards you've gotten. Just know that she really has a heart for children and we are so blessed. Dawn, when he started talking about the school, said, said, okay, you got to call Cindy, you got to call. And he's done that. So, I'm pleased with that. And at this point, I'm going to be quiet and let you do your thing.
That's great. Thank you. And we're real excited about this, the aspect of Overall Creek. And I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about our otter and, and the color. There he is up on the screen for you. I have a PowerPoint and, or she, we'll find out when her students name that otter in the fall. Anyway, I have a PowerPoint. It's all pictures. It's going to be a quick little virtual field trip of what we're going to propose and work on as really an environmental focus, really external learning. It's kind of funny, we're building a brand-new school and we're going to try to get outside of it. But that is, the creek is, is, is a huge resource. And we've, we've been probably, probably 100 emails in the past several weeks since we met with Dr. Gilbert in her office to talk about what we're going to do with Overall Creek. And it still is in the planning stages. But the goal is to have several learning places along the creek and as a part of the, of the school. We've got school nutrit, uh, just talked today, school nutrition's talking about writing some grants for some gardening. We're, we're looking at other grants. I've got some businesses already involved that, environmental engineering companies that want to work with us. So, we're, we're met with the, one of the ministers at the church that's building right in front of Overall Creek, if you're, if you go out there. Met with him today, already talking about some sweat equity and, and setting up that. So, let me get into the PowerPoint real quick. Dr. Smith Walters is going to comment on how we might be able to connect some of these learning environments or stages on this little path along the way. Now, there is a current, well, about 10 days ago, aerial shot of Overall Creek. And what I really want you to do is, see that, if you look at the PowerPoint, that beautifully freehand drawn yellow area is where we're going to focus for this PowerPoint. And it's, I, again, it will be really fast. It's a little, a fun little field trip. I had fun trying to make it for y'all. That's basically the, the perimeter, the east, the east boundary of Overall Creek campus. Here's an aerial shot. That is the best I could do with the school, the gray areas there. And if you'll see the little stars and the little, little graphics I have along the way, this, again, ladies and gentlemen, is the beginning of, really of a foundation of where, what we're going to do. Dr. Smith Walters and I and some other groups from the Discovery Center and some other people are going to take a tour out there and try to figure out how we're going to work this out. But I'm so excited about it. To start, to start out, let me see, got to get this going here. In between that you saw, let me go back. You saw in between the, the building where you have the wings, there, there are spots, some of them are wider than the others. Since our stage got bigger, we have less in the one spot. That was, I had to throw that in there. Anyway, we're going to have some spots for some gardening. And this is a, not, obviously, that's not our school. But it's what it could look like. And there we go.
It's really aged quickly.
It was the church, they did that. Anyway, so, we're, we're, we're looking forward. So, what kind of, um, that could be gardening, it could be, you know, I see some butterfly plants in there. I see some things that, that are really, and what were some of the studies that, that you've sent along that you've seen about outdoor learning?
Well, what has happened is the idea of taking kids outside is something that's fairly new as far as research that's been done. But research shows us that active inquiry-based learning in the out-of-doors, where students don't just read about information, but they actually experience that information, leads to a much more powerful learning experience. So, you're taking that linguistic learning they get in the classroom, the reading, the lecture, the, the talk amongst themselves, and you're, you're tying that with non-linguistic learning in the out-of-doors. And what they do with their hands, what they experience with each other, whether it's collaboration, whether it's research, whether it's journaling to reinforce reading and writing skills, whether it is mathematics that they're doing by measuring out an acre. Who knows what an acre is anymore? Us old people do, but truly, most folks don't. But if they go out there and they, they pace it off or they measure it, they know what an acre looks like. So, there's mathematics. When we're looking at a, a garden, for example, they've got to know how many square feet it is. They need to know how close or far away to put the plants, what kind of plants are the best. Is there a difference in, in where the plants should grow and where we should plant them? So, they, there's a lot of rich learning that is available in an outdoor classroom that just can't be duplicated inside that classroom box that we're traditionally experiencing. So, I think it's a, a great idea to, to take the outdoors and bring it inside and then take the kids not only from the inside, take them out doors so they experience nature and hands-on, inquiry-based, project-based and problem-based learning. New, fairly new buzzwords in education, but something we can definitely do here at Overall Creek and for Murfreesboro City Schools.
Yes, fantastic. Let me, uh, let's go back. So, we have, might, might have some raised gardens, beds. Those are really nice for children to be involved all the way around them, see the whole process. And those would be along our little trail. So, all I'm going to do is go, if you'll see, I don't know if the mouse will come up on there or not, it won't. You'll see up there, the little garden icon, it's kind of small. Then we go to an area that is actually bordering some undeveloped land. You look at the top of the screen, the very top, right in the middle, right where, you see where that blue line is there? A little bit north of that is off of our property. That is in a flood plain. Okay? So, it, it could be undeveloped, could be left as a wildflower area. All right? And we can see what, what can happen there. Oh, look at there, pretty wildflowers. Anyway, that is what we would hope to have maybe a station there. It's like the, you know, going along on the interstate and they say, don't mow. You see those signs? Well, this would be one of those areas I'm hopeful. The next one would be a bird feeding area. This was really fascinating to me. I love to feed birds. I love it. See all the different birds. But Dr. Smith Walters was talking about, you start, are able to study by what is left behind from the birds. And you get to see the seeds and, and what is generated through the whole process of feeding birds. And that would be, that almost could look just like Overall Creek if we did that in a location for that. And now, we're taking the turn, we've turned a corner, you see that red bird now? And we're going to stop at that star. And that is actually Overall Creek. All right? That is, I went down there, I got to, uh, one morning, I was out there, it was that last cold was about five or six degrees in the morning. I'll never forget it. It was one of the most beautiful trips I've ever taken. I didn't want to leave, but I had to go to work. Anyway, right down here is actually a spot where we could access the creek. Students could access the creek. I actually see getting waiters for students where we could do that during the day and, and, and exploring. It's not very deep right there. And, and I, I had a blast with our sixth graders at Fall Creek Falls with a silt, I call it a silt fence, and catching all those little, little microorganisms and looking at them and seeing what's in the water. And it helps to determine what is good water or bad water by what's in.
We look at water quality, we can look at pH, we can look at dissolved oxygen. Why do you find certain plants or animals in certain locations? We can look at succession. why do you find certain plants or animals in certain locations? We can look at succession, not only in that open field, but what's happening around the edge, and why do you find more organisms in the edge than you do in a forest or in the field? Well, it's because those species come together in that edge effect. So we could talk about everything from geology to water quality, and also write and read about those things while students are doing journaling.
And count them and do math. So we're going along the star, we're in the middle of the woods there with the star, and look at, oh, we have a campground now all of a sudden. So that's a possibility, what we might see. I think that would be really cool to maybe have multiple faculty members and set this up. You know, this is all developmental. We've got to find out what kind of, what kind of rules there are, and what kind of guidelines we would have, and to make that happen. But that also could look like that wooded area. It's about 75 to 100 feet from the creek towards the school, and that could easily look like we could have that set up similar. Around the next star, that's actually right there at that location, that is a big game trail. It wasn't moose or bison big game, it was deer and coyotes. But it was exciting for me to see that, all that interaction, and then again, it's a transitional part of the woods in the forest. That is a possible garden area, we could do sunflowers or corn, and actually feed wildlife with that area. And then, look at the tracks, and make plaster pairs of the tracks, and just establish patterns. And so, finally, we might have, I know where we have some of those, some of that decking material, they're attached to some cottages. I might steal them when those cottages leave.
Please, though, there's not all the cottages, but you can come to that.
Yeah, the porches.
Just for the public to know.
You can't rent them anymore this summer, they're closed, so.
They were not renting out and stealing some cottages.
All right. And so then, if we built an overlook, this is actually Overall Creek on that same day, where there is a spot that would be a very neat little overlook where children could, this was, it hadn't rained very much lately, it was cold, obviously, but there was a great water, and that would be a good spot for children to see that. You know, hopefully, we would get to experience that again. That would be something that, that was just from the mist coming off of the creek and forming on the, so anyway, there you go. That's kind of some of the developmental things that we're talking about. I'm really excited about working with Dr. Smith Walters. We're going to go out there and walk and figure out an early plan on how to make this happen.
Ms. Phillips?
It's just so exciting. I want to go to that school. It just sounds so exciting. I love everything that you have going on there. I'm sure, when I saw the tents, though, I did think ticks, you know, I have to say.
They're not invited.
Okay.
Ticks. But anyway, I.
Let's call C about that.
One thing I, one thing I want to, I'd like to see us do as a system, is commit to the maintenance of these outdoor places. I know we have a few things scattered throughout the system that, where someone has had an awesome idea of painting alphabet blocks to honor a particular teacher, and I'll go to the schools and I'll see that fading on the sidewalks, and I think, what a shame, what a shame. Let's, I would like us to commit to renewing those, the sites we already have that are outdoor learning areas, and embrace this idea, because I think you're absolutely right. This will work for all children. Every child's going to benefit from this. The child who's excelling, the child who maybe is struggling in the classroom, and this is a place that they can excel and reach out. I mean, there's just so many wonderful learning opportunities for all the children, and I really appreciate you, you know, being a part of all this.
That's one of the questions that I ask. I have a lot of people that are throwing things my way, and a lot of suggestions, and that is typically one of my first questions. How are we going to sustain it? That's a great idea, I love it, let's look at it, but the first question is, is how are we going to be able to sustain it? And my experience with that, and my other jobs and things, is you're exactly right, is we can talk about it, and we can build it, and we can have it out there, but we're going to have to maintain it in order for it to be viable. And the other goal is to have other city schools come and visit that place for almost field trips within the city, like the Discovery Center, that they could come there. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Barrett.
I was just about to ask you if other city schools could come visit your.
That's a goal, yes ma'am.
Fabulous. I just love your collaboration on this, and I keep thinking, man, I probably would have liked math and science had I had this experience. And I think about how lucky these kids are to be able to learn about mapping off space, and learning about acres, and learning about seeds and all that. I'm excited. Thank you very much.
Mr. Barrett?
It's great to see another collaboration between MTSU and our city schools, but I just can't wait to see where this goes, and good luck with it. I hope it turns out great.
Thank you, thank you.
Don and Dr. Gilbert are hard to say no to.
Dr. Brown?
I just think it's interesting that we've heard two very different presentations that have talked about how we can get students to learn for the joy of learning, not just to take a test, and I think that's very, very important.
And if you'll remember, Dr. Brown, that was one of the goals that the board set at their strategic plan. So you all did well.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
The next presentation is really brief, but I did want to give you a brief technology update. Dan Bochers is here, and also Karen Hawkins. And Dan, if you could just give us a brief rundown, please, of what's been accomplished as far as the infrastructure and the, and if you have the numbers of computers. And Karen, just brief remarks, please. I know that we gave the board an update on this previously, but I thought that it was important for the public to hear, and also the board to hear where we are with this now.
Okay. As of today, we've got all the second through sixth grade laptops installed. We've put in 2,863 laptops, which is quite a few, 491 carts, and 85% of the infrastructure has been upgraded throughout the system, which is roughly 85 new switches and 85 additional wireless access points for all the children connected to the internet. We've put in a total of 145 terabytes of storage for the cameras. Our security cameras now will hold a 14-days' worth of information. We installed a case management system, allows us to manage both our iPads and the laptops, and it also lets us keep track of the assets, where they to be used in a different location. We've got some other things, but I'll let Karen.
Well, one of the things, our iPads haven't been distributed to the students, but we have been working on putting together the image for those for kindergarten and first grade, all of the apps that we're going to put on those. So once we get that image ready, then this case that he was talking about will easily distribute that software across the district. We've had several trainings, there's been some after-school trainings, there's been things going on during the school day. In fact, on March the 6th, our next half-day, there's all of the resource teachers, special ed teachers are coming in for some software training, so we're trying to catch any time that we can to continue the training. So we're moving right along, we're seeing, I'm able to pull reports to see what programs students are using, and then we can target our professional development to try to increase those numbers in the programs, and that's some of the things that we're working on.
Thank you so much for your presentation. If there are no questions from the board? Thank you.
Dan, before you leave, I wanted to let you know that the teach, that we had a teacher from Discovery that developed this for your tech guys, the sign here. All the principals and assistant principals have signed it on the back, so I'm going to let you take that with you to your technology guys, because they've done, they've done magnificent work with installing this. So thank you so much, and please express to them our appreciation. Yes, you go ahead and take it with you, Dan.
Ms. Phillips has a comment?
Now, the writing assessment with the technology.
The writing assessment we have had.
Okay. And how did that go with the technology?
From what I understand, it went fine. That's what I've heard.
Okay, well, that's good.
Ms. Rinnier? It just dawned on me. I was in one of the schools yesterday, and the second graders were taking their first ThinkLink online.
Oh, wow.
And so it was interesting to see them trying to log in, and I walked in one classroom, and the teacher goes, "Are you here to help?" And I said, "I can, if you want me to." It was fun. So it's nice to see them being used.
Yeah, that's a good, good thing. Your next report is the Extended School Program, and we have several folks here from the Extended School. One reason we wanted to do this is because we are about to gear up for summer, and also, we wanted to let you know, this year, the Extended School Program has been a real focus of the district. Mr. Ringstaff is heading that program up, and so I wanted to update that for you and also for the public, because you will be hearing much more about ESP in the coming months.
In addition to my responsibilities in the Human Resources Department, I have the privilege of working in our, the best Extended School Program in the state of Tennessee. Our Extended School Program receives accolades from the state, and also visits from other school districts to learn the great things that we're doing.
Mike?
I'm not talking loud enough?
Sorry. So what I would like to do is introduce our ESP central office staff, the administration team, and I'm going to be smart and get out of the way after I introduce them. I'm going to introduce them in the order that they're going to speak, Amanda Parks, our operations manager, Diane Click, Assistant ESP Supervisor, Catherine Gordon, grant coordinator, and Gretchen Campbell, Coordinator of Academic Programs.
Thank you. We're going to be doing a very short and brief slideshow presentation, just to go over a few of the highlights that are going on in our program. First and foremost, in case you haven't seen, we are very excited that we introduced a new logo for the Extended School Program this year. It was very important to us to really promote and just highlight some of the things that go on in our after-school program. We really wanted the public to see that we're providing children the opportunity to participate in dance, to participate in the arts, science activities, very much just we want to encourage children that their talents need to be brought out and give them that opportunity in the after-school program. All right. And a few things that we're going to be covering tonight are going to be some of those programs. We are still very consistently offering very structured, hands-on, educational opportunities for the children after school, but we're excited to say that we have offered almost 900 enrichment programs and opportunities for students in the past year. So we're just looking forward to continuing to promote those, and also come up with new and innovative programs as well. We also are going to be telling you about our increased participation, our scholarship assistance that we're offering our students, and also our professional development. The best way, I think, to tell you about the program is definitely for you to see some of the programs that are going on. Some of the highlights here, of course, our sports programming, we're always evolving and changing that, teaching some students lacrosse and sports that maybe they haven't been exposed to before, our sewing classes, offering piano lessons for students. A really great program, our DIY room design, where children were hands-on creating dioramas of interior design. They were picking out the fabrics for the furniture, wallpaper, paint colors, how they would want things arranged, whether it be in their living rooms, their bedrooms. Also, Australian art projects, not just Australia. Students have basically been exploring countries from around the world, learning about the culture, hands-on food projects, art projects, whether it be the clothing, different things within that country. Science exploration, of course, our puppetry, which we've been really excited about. The students, of course, can incorporate writing with that, they can write their own puppet skits, as well as their drama. Our practicing keyboarding at Discovery School, we're really excited that we're really trying to increase the technology opportunities that we offer the students after school. Our Junior Chef Program has been absolutely wonderful. To see that collaboration with our Murfreesboro City School chef, and he is taking those students into the school cafeterias, providing them so many hands-on opportunities to really learn how to cook their own meals, learn about nutrition as well. Music Mania, we offer music at so many of our schools right now, drum and rhythm. Our Still to Burrow, we absolutely have loved the Yeah Rock Block Program, which has been a great collaboration where students can actually form their own rock bands. They're the singers, they do guitar, they do piano, so it's been a really good opportunity. Health and Wellness, we're increasing that across the system as well. This was a really great project that our Black Fox students took part in, where basically, they learned and taste-tested a wide variety of fruits and vegetables, things that maybe they had never been exposed to, those vegetables that sometimes you walk past in the store because you're not really sure what it is. But the students had the opportunity to taste-test and learn about those. As well as increasing our programming, one great way for us to do that is through our collaborations. So we have a great collaboration with our fire department, who have come out and done a lot of special projects with the children. Of course, our junior achievement, we had a wonderful collaboration with Screen Art, where some of our Mitchell Nelson students actually got to go, design their own t-shirts, learn the whole process of the Screen Art, and how they would actually make the t-shirts on their own. And the Grand Pals partnership that we did with some of our John Pitterd students was a wonderful collaboration where the students paired up with the people at the nursing home, they visited them, they did some reading collaborations with them. It was just a really great opportunity. All right, I'm going to let Ms. Click take over.
Hello. Obviously, we are very proud to be an extension of the school day, and that's what we consider ourselves, an extension of the school day. We teach in a different kind of way, in collaboration with classroom teachers. We currently have 2,185 students enrolled citywide. We are projecting for the next school year to increase that enrollment by 2,215. That is a 63% growth since the 2011, 2012 school year, and I think that is an awesome growth percentage. Obviously, we have expanded our class offerings and our enrichments. The ones that were shown tonight were all new. We, obviously, with 900 enrichments, we continue some of our classics like cooking and drama and things like that, but those were all new, and we hope to continue expansion and collaboration with the community to make that happen. We've also made our site directors full-time, and that gives them time during the school day to collaborate with the classroom teachers, to collaborate with the principals, and to do more research about what surveys the parents are interested in bringing the programs into the schools. So we're glad of our increased enrollment.
Thank you. Hello. I'm going to speak to you about our grants tonight. We have two primary grants in the Extended School Program. The first is the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant, which is a federal grant that is given to the states as a block grant, and we compete for on a three-year rotational basis. That grant serves Bradley, Kason Lane, Hobgood, and both of the Mitchell Nelsens, and currently, we have 179 students attending on that. The numbers of that go up daily. I receive applications every day for that grant. And what is done with that is, it provides homework assistance and small group tutoring for students who are deemed at-risk, and the at-risk factors are not necessarily all academic, but also socioeconomic factors, and also environmental factors in the home. We also have a Lottery for Education After-School Programs Grant that is funded by the state lottery, and as my state coordinator likes to say, "Please play the lottery, but if you win, don't claim it," because it will go to after-school. So I have to put that plug out there. She would be very upset if I did not. With that grant, we have 131 students attending out of 150 spots. So our participation rates are very high on that, and our numbers continue to grow. We also provide for the schools who, oh, those schools on the LEAPs grant also are John Pitterd, Northfield, and Black Fox. For those schools that do not have a grant, we provide special rate assistance, and that is for any family who finds themselves in need of scholarship assistance, so that we can meet the needs of all families in
And finally, we have professional development is a big part of this as well, because our staff need to be better staff members, and this is a great way to do this. We, all staff are required to attend 12 to 18 hours of professional development classes each year, and so we provide over 120 hours of professional development opportunities. The topics that we've increased are, we've increased a lot of these, behavior management, teaching, empathy, understanding poverty, first aid and CPR. All of our staff are certified in first aid and CPR. We've designed a class to address professionalism, and district-wide service, in-service taught by certified teachers, administrators, and community partners. And here are some pictures of that really fabulous day that we have every year. This is our second annual professional development class, and it looks like fun, but it was also a great way for them to learn. You can see the "We Love ESP," and basically with this, we were asking staff to pick props of what their personality brings to ESP, and so that's what they've done here. And then we took a collaborative picture of all the staff at each school, and so this is how, how we.
is how we learn. We learn by doing, we learn by learning about different subject areas, they were able to take classes taught by certified teachers in art, science, language arts, and math. And so, we've done a lot of fun things with that. Finally, we have a video to show you as well. We collaborated with Murfreesboro City Channel 3, and we would like to show that video now. I'm not sure where it is, though.
The Extended School Program is a year-round extension of the daily six-and-a-half-hour school day. ESP offers students the opportunity to become involved in enriching activities and gives parents the convenience of safe, school-based care for their child. In 1978, Tennessee lawmakers passed legislation encouraging the use of public school facilities for the before and after-school care of children.
ESP across all of the city schools has been wonderful. We were excited to know that it was available for the first year when our daughter went to kindergarten five years ago, and since then, she's been going every day ever since, including summers.
Our program is so important to our students, especially for those who have working parents and need somewheres to go after school. We really provide a safe and structured learning environment for them, and it just really extends their learning day.
My name is Otto, and I go to Scales Elementary. I was in junkyard dance, and we like to drum on trash cans to make music, and we just learned to stay as one.
My name is Tony Hartman, and I'm the head director of Steel to Burrow at John Pittard Elementary School and Scales Elementary School. Well, Steel to Burrow is an after-school steel drum band for fifth and sixth graders. So, what that includes is playing steel drums, kind of like just from the islands. It's a really fun class, because we learn about music, but we also learn about community skills, how to work as a team, how to, you know, help elders, and also be helped by others, because, you know, some things don't come easily for others, and to be able to accept that help is also a big part of what we try to teach.
Today, ESP is in all 12 Murfreesboro City schools, with 35% of the total student body enrolled.
They want to get into it so, so much, following instructions, really being able to see what the other ones does, come up with their own ideas about things, so it's just really good. It really gets them involved, they get them excited about it, and they just, they love ESP.
Parents, students, and staff are also encouraged to participate in the program by submitting ideas or suggestions for classes and activities.
During that time while they're there, there's so much going on. Some of the schools, in our 12 schools, no one is alike. One time, Seagull had a little cheerleader camp that was going on, so it's out there.
We have cheerleading gymnastics, boys gymnastics, and tumbling classes, and it's important that we do keep our children active, because especially in America today, obesity is such a problem. And above all, we want to make sure that we're keeping our kids out of trouble, and I think ESP and this program in general just gives them something to do after school and makes sure that they're not going to get involved in drugs or any activities after school that would halt through them or falter them in the future.
There is a thing called nature deficit that we're trying to face. A lot of our children don't get the opportunity to be outside, and so we need to bring that to the school, so they have opportunities to go outside at the school, to learn about animals, to learn about nature.
I liked all the stuff that she was talking about, and it was cool.
We are spending about 10 weeks together doing a theater enrichment. We're taking old stories that we know and love, and looking back at them a little deeper, digging a little deeper and finding really interesting things that we didn't know were there, and we're also writing our own stories, writing our own plays, and playing a lot of games that, you know, are helping, helping build character, you know, learning how to be something else.
My mission and my organization's mission is to step in and introduce children to forms of art that they might not have known otherwise, and to give them an opportunity to express themselves in a way that they might not have otherwise.
It's fun, and you get to learn new stuff every day.
Well, my favorite thing about ESP is that when we come in the beginning, we can meet new, we can have new friends, and we can meet other people from other grades, and I think my favorite thing about ESP is that, is enrichments, because we can, we get to do a lot of activities that we haven't done, and they let you eat snacks, you get to do your homework, and you have enrichments, and it's a privilege to get enrichments, because you earn it.
We love ESP!
Where do we sign up? That's what I want to know.
Thank you.
You were awesome this way.
No, I didn't.
No, I was just thinking, what a wonderful team we have working on ESP, and I remember years ago, speaking to Dr. Gilbert about this, and I am so glad that the days of the kids sitting in the halls bore two tears, sound like they're gone, so hats off.
We're working on that very hard, and I appreciate the instruction staff, I know Sherry worked with some of the PD, and I think some other folks did too, so I really appreciate the, Karen Cook, and I went over to Northfield last year when you had that day, and a lot of the teachers were involved with the training, so I think that's made a huge difference. And we're still working, we're not where we want to be yet, but we're closer.
Oh, personnel update. Mr. Anderson?
Hey, I don't have anything on personnel for you, other than what's in your board packet. On the, if you're okay, I'll go to the finance report. On the finance report, last year at this time, we were at $1,352,000 to the good. This year, if you'll see, we're $1,147,000 down. What I need to point out to you on that is we have been purchasing all the technology that you heard about earlier, to the tune of $3,800,000, of which we have not been reimbursed from the city as yet. It's, you know, it's a timing issue again, and if I apply the numbers all back in line to where we should be, we would be up right now $1,594,000. So, as soon as the, as soon as the city gets it in there, they're cycled the process, and we will get that difference of that money. So, I just wanted to let you know, cash flow-wise, where we were on that, when you look at a negative number, when last year was a positive number, just wanted you to see. On the revenue side, we have, one of the numbers that jumps off the page at you is in the 2013-14 year-to-date number, where it shows the fourth number down in that column, $913,000, and that's where they have started to reimburse us part of that technology money, and that's why it shows up in that line. So, what it is, is the money that comes back into the system after we spend it, so it's just a matter of accounting on how we handle that. And if you go down that same column, the number 467,965, part of that $342,000 was money from the state for technology, that the state had said last year at the BEP that they were going to give us technology money, and it came in one lump sum, and that's where it came into the system to help offset our technology expenditures. So, I want you to be aware of that. We're at the 58.3% of the year overall, and the revenue's at 58.5, so we're pretty much on target where we thought we would be in that time. On the expenditure side, we're at 58.5% overall, again, at 58.3, and so, again, the one that's going to jump off at you is the, is the technology, which is 584%, and that's because of what I just explained about us paying for the money upfront before we get reimbursed on that. I did want to update you on the utilities, since we had a very cold December and January. I've run the numbers on those of where we were last year at this time, and for those two months added together, we're $22,522 more expenditure to pay for the utility bills for December and January. So, I need to let you know about that. That could be an issue for us as we move forward into the year, so we're hoping for much milder weather as we keep, keep going.
Ms. Rinear and Ms. Smith?
Would there, is it broken by individual schools? I thought it was, correct? So, does it show that the geothermal at John Pittard and now at the new school, is it holding its own and still looking good compared to the other?
The geothermal is just awesome, as far as the amount that we spend there. The other schools, one of the things that throws it off whack right now is because at Hobgood, we have all that extra square footage, so it's kind of hard to put apples to apples there, because we've added a lot of square footage, and we've added a lot of height to the library area and the office and hallways, and a bigger cafeteria, so really don't have a good feel for that particular one. But overall, you know, I've got some schools that actually spend a little less for those two months, which is what I want to go back and study and see, why did they spend less than the previous year? So, we're hoping it's because they're paying attention to it, but we fully anticipated more expenditures on utilities because how cold the weather was this December and January.
Ms. Smith?
So, in other states or other districts, you know, right when school entered, returned after Christmas break or winter break, was it ever considered that we wouldn't open for the first two days or so, like other school districts didn't because of utilities? Would that have saved us some money like that?
The amount of utilities that we would save would be minimal, because we still have the building totally up and running for ESP. What we do is we have set points, and we have electronic controls that we turn it down at night, and we turn it up during the day, but when we have, we have to prepare the building for ESP anyhow. So, we didn't use that as a consideration to close the schools, at least I didn't discuss that with Dr. Gilbert.
The reason we closed, when we looked at that very first cold day, is because it was the very first cold day. So, you're looking at children maybe not being prepared, you're looking at perhaps buildings not being prepared, our buses, we thought, were relatively ready to go, so that was the reason for that. But if we had closed every day with a cold day, we would have had, I think, some real issues with parents and going to work and some other things happening, so I think we were much better prepared. So, that really was the determination on the cold day. Typically, we're going to close only because of the ice, or if there's some, the day that we closed, when it turned out to be rainy, there's nothing more miserable than having a school that's open and trying to get children home when the snow is coming down, as we saw in Atlanta, and it takes us about two hours to get all of our buses cleared. So, when you're looking at that determination of school closing, you're really looking from 5:30 in the morning until 5:30 at night, and what might happen in those hours, and...
And children going home to an empty house.
That's exactly right.
Now, I applaud your decision on the non-snow day, because of what could have, with the bus turn around. I totally agree with that. My other question is, with so much money going towards our technology that we have not been completely, you know, reimbursed for, what is, are we having any problems paying our vendors?
No, our, this shows you a cash flow up through that point, and when this report's done, this is through the end of January, so we're already, you know, deep into February. We haven't had any issues paying any bills like...
What's our turnaround time with our vendors?
Our vendors, most of them are 30 days turnaround time.
Thank you.
Ms. Rinear?
I'm lost on this spreadsheet. Where is the technology line? I can't find it.
If you go to the expenditure, expenditure page, it is titled Other Support, it's line, it's towards the bottom, 72810, and you can, and...
Yeah, I see it now. I just couldn't find technology, I didn't know where it was.
See, it's way, it's way out of whack, it's 584%, because obviously, we didn't budget for this.
But now, when we, we still took up, or we're contributing a large portion of that ourselves, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They asked us to contribute between $300,000 and $400,000, and they said 40%, so I've rounded off at 400, and the number I gave you earlier, I subtracted $400,000 out of that number, assuming that that was our commitment to it.
Okay. I had it way inflated in my head, okay, 400,000.
Yeah, we have to do, we have to run the money through our books, so it shows up as an expenditure, and then it comes back in as a revenue, so I'm just trying to show you the line items where it's going to hit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions on the financial? Okay, the last piece is the enrollment data. We're holding our own, we have grown 21 students from the end of last year. We do anticipate a lot more growth when we open up the new school. Our PTR remains overall at 19.43 to 1, and our attendance for December and January, both at 95%, which is still excellent for that time of year. We were running a 97 clip before that, which is outstanding, so we're very pleased on our attendance.
Okay. Ms. Rinear?
I have another question on this. With our projected enrollment there at the bottom right-hand corner, the projected enrollment for this year was 7,404, we're down 222 from that.
Right.
What, what about the monies that were budgeted for those 222 students? Where does that go now? Does it stay in operating fund? Where, where does that go?
That's a great question, thank you.
Okay, if I did it right.
Because when I, when I do our budget, I anticipate the expenditures, but I do not anticipate the revenues for that growth, so we don't get burned if we don't come up with that number.
Okay.
Because if we do have the growth, we'll get it in growth funds from the state.
Right.
But we didn't grow enough this year, we get the growth funds.
To get it.
So, in other words, it didn't hurt our revenue side at all, because I didn't over-project it, and on the expenditure side, we don't hire the teachers if the numbers aren't there to justify that.
Okay. So, we don't have this little windfall sitting somewhere, then?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Other business, well, we have a reminder of the retreat, be sure and get your topics in, so we can get those set up and give Dr. Gilbert a chance to, if it's any information we need, she'll get a chance to get that for us. Mr. Barrett?
Can I make an announcement? I'm the proud new daddy of two new baby girls, Annabelle and Olivia, February 17th, and we're pretty excited. I'm tired, but pretty excited, that's the Barrett household, so in about a couple more years, they'll be coming through the city schools, we can't wait, so.
Well, before I ask for an adjournment, I said I'd save my remarks to the end. Thank you for being a mentor to us, a friend, and a wealth of knowledge. You know you'll be missed, but I'm happy for you, and thank you from your Murfreesboro City School Board, thank you. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.